We call to order the Warranton Board of Alderman Meeting for Tuesday, September 17th, 2013. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. That's Ms. Casterly to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I begin the meeting by stating the obvious. The mayor is not present at the meeting this week. He is at the Missouri Municipal League meeting. And I'm going to try and stumble through this. He along with Melody are both absent this evening. First item on the agenda, item number three, is approval of minutes. Three A, approval of the special meeting on tax rate from August 29th, 2013.
I'll make a motion we approve the special meeting on tax rate from August 29th, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the special meeting on tax rate from August 29th, 2013. Call for a vote.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Abstain.
Alderman Clark?
Abstain.
Motion passes four to nothing with two abstentions. Three B is minutes from the regular board meeting minutes of September 3rd, 2013.
Make a motion for approval of the board meeting from September 2003.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dreyer, to approve the regular board meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2013. Call for a vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Abstain, I was not present.
Motion carries five to no- five to zero with one abstention.
I don't vote. Forget me.
I'm sorry. Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Five to nothing with one abstention. And three C, executive session minutes from September 3rd, 2013.
Motion for approval of executive session minutes from September 2013.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Flake, for the executive session minutes from September 3rd, 2013. Vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with one abstention. Item number four on the agenda this evening is hearing from the public. Every meeting we afford the opportunity for members of the public to come forward, speak their business. We only ask that you limit your comments to five minutes and keep the comments civil in nature. Would anybody like to come forward and speak?
My name is Bill McClure from the pawn shop from Warranton Pawn and Jewelry.
Yes, sir.
And I have a question to you guys as when it comes to purchasing used items, jewelry, furniture, any kind of item like that. The pawn shop is regulated by the state of Missouri, the city of Warranton, and several other agencies. And I have to get copies of everybody's driver's license. I do a fingerprint, and I keep the records for five years on my books. Okay?
Okay.
I'm aware of the situation that every other business in town that does deal in used items does not have to follow the same criteria. So people that don't have to have IDs, they go to all these other places to get rid of their items. And they're not being held accountable for what they're taking. And so I'm, and I'm not saying anything bad. I mean, competition's good. You know, that's how businesses thrive. But the fact of the matter is, if it's taking away from one other business, I mean, it's just, it's just tearing me apart. You know, having everyone else being overlooked. They don't have to be held accountable.
Is the, the requirement, is something that is required by state or by local ordinance?
Well, it's federal, state, and local. They tell me that I have to maintain records of all the people that come in and sell or loan to me. Okay?
Okay.
And other places in town are allowed to buy, like gold, for instance. I've had several police officers come to my store and tell me that I have to give them information on the people that have bought or sold to me, or made loans to me. And, which is fine. I don't mind. I mean, I like to help out the police department any way I can, because I don't condone thievery. Okay?
Yes.
However, like I say, I've known that the only reason that no one else has to be held accountable for licenses and identification is because they're not considered a lending institution or a pawn shop. But I would think that this community would like to stand strong and hold everybody to be held accountable for the same, you know, to the same time that I am.
Alderman Cornell, if I can respond to that?
Sure.
Because I've worked with you. When we, when the state statute changed on pawn shops, I think it was three or four years ago.
Mm-hmm.
The, our ordinance is the extent permissible by state statute. You know, and I'm sure you've reviewed it, that we have basically what the state statute allows for pawn shops and whatnot. You know, I don't know specifically about who else you're talking about, what incident you're talking about.
I'm not talking about any particular incident, per se. I'm just saying overall.
Right. Well, you said there was other institutions that you knew that they were bringing in stuff and getting loans.
Well, they don't have to, they don't have to produce copies of driver's licenses. They don't have to show who brought what to them.
Yeah, but the city and those other instances, generally speaking, we have authority under the state statute to require pawn shops to do that.
Oh, sure. I understand.
Just like the state statutes have the regulations that you have to keep that stuff, you know, for five years and whatnot in federal law.
Oh, no, I understand, and I have no problem doing that. I'm just thinking that it would help curb the theft.
If we, if we passed an ordinance requiring these other...
At least to hold, at least to keep records of who they're, who they're buying their merchandise from.
But, but the problem is, is that it's only for pawn shops.
I understand, but...
Institutions.
I understand that that state statute is in the...
But that's the extent of the authority that we have, is what the state statute allows. So, you're right, for pawn shops, it's pretty in-depth. But for other institutions that may be buying gold and are not given loans, you know, like a pawn shop, we don't have the authority to regulate.
Right.
Like pawn shops have a very specific authority, kind of like licenses, it has a very specific authority that gives to the local governing body. So my recommendation would be, you know, write your state legislator, you know, your state senator, and say, hey, can you guys? I know that they've tried to have some legislation changed on that.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think it surprises you that some of the title loans is also an issue, and some of the payday loans and the gold buyers and whatnot, but they're a pretty strong lobby interest. So the city's authority derives from state statute, and that's how we enforce our ordinances is based on what the state statute allows us to what extent. So we wouldn't have the ability to go to, you know, necessarily to another institution that is not considered or defined as a pawn shop under state statute like your businesses.
Okay. I was just thinking about the crime rate is all I was thinking about, trying to do that as well.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me ask you, counselor. So in other words, the, I understand, we don't even probably need to have a municipal statute for pawn shops because the state has authority. Allows us to take them to municipal court and write a local ticket, I understand that. But we don't have, a person, any city could not create their ordinance regulating basically anything they want to regulate? Is that what I hear you saying?
You, there's two ideas that come into play. It's number one, whether or not the state statute preempts, preemption, preempts municipality from regulating certain things. There is, the state statute has specific authority for local governments, really for local law enforcement, to verify and check records. I think the five-year thing, I don't think that's by ordinance, I think that's by state statute and federal law that requires that. Correct?
Yeah.
And the identification. I think the only thing that really by ordinance effectively that you deal with on a local level is we have to pass the ordinance so the Sheriff's Department and the Warranton PD can go look at your records for items that have been pawned or purchased.
So let's take a scenario where we find out that a business in town is buying used jewelry, and, you know, the question is, in his case, if the police think he got it, then he produces a record. But what if somebody was selling it to another person who's buying the jewelry? Maybe they're just selling it for gold by...
Like there's a suspicion it's stolen jewelry?
Right. So where does that put the police, and where does that put the city?
That then would go, would kind of fall back to traditional law enforcement remedies such as, there's a document known as an investigative subpoena, which is a judicially signed and authorized, you know, review of records, and then obviously a search warrant as well could be sought.
But you don't have probable cause to get a search warrant.
Correct.
So if, if somebody came into your shop and the police said, well, we're looking for this piece of silver or jewelry that was stolen, and he says, I don't have it.
Yeah.
But you couldn't go to anybody else who may be borrowing because you have probable cause at that time?
Right. Correct. It is something that makes being in the pawn shop business by federal and state law more difficult, but it's like anything else. You know, people come up with new businesses. Like the we-buy gold is a traditional business, but it's really become popular in the last couple of years. And some, same with the payday loans, you know, and the title loans have become popular in some of those, you know, realms. So, you know, the state statutes take some time to catch up. But, yeah, I mean, they are more regulated by state and federal law than, you know, your average gold, you know, we-buy gold, because they're not making those loans that meet the specifications of state statute.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Moving on to item number five.
John?
Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up.
I'm Gary Foulon, and I'm here tonight just on behalf of Warren County Patriots and because it's September the 17th, which is Constitution Day and beginning of Constitution Week. And so we elected to show our appreciation for you guys serving and being willing to spend the time, and I know it's, I always totally appreciate it. But, but I do have for each of you and the mayor, and so I guess I'll just auction his off later. He's not here, but it is a, I won't open it up because it's cumbersome, but it's a 22 by 34 poster. On the front, it's in very nice color, has the Constitution, Bill of Rights, and Amendments 11 through 27. On the back, it has Constitution at a glance, which is really a reference, a quick, easy reference to those things. So if I have your permission, I would like to present each of you with one of these and...
And I'll take the mayor's so I can put both sides.
Hope see you with that. Use them, be great for your grandkids, those two, so. John, thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Leave the mayor's here, I'll get it to him.
Okay. Hold you to your...
Thank you.
I'll have to go get yours since the mayor's...
We can, we can hand that on now.
Put seven down.
Knocking on its own back row. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Any further comments from the public? Moving on to item number five, extend that same courtesy to the members of the Board of Alderman. Anybody?
The only thing I have was in the paper, there was a editorial commenting on the audit. And I think the issue the lady brought forth on the audit is, I think there was some misunderstanding in some part of the public that what was released on the first part of the audit specifically dealt with municipal court, and we're still waiting for the rest of the audit to, to come. And it's tied up in, I guess, the head auditor's office due to priorities and other issues. So I think the question really was, what happened? Well, that's what happened, is we're, we've got part of it, we're waiting for the rest still. So I think if other people have that same question, that's the situation.
I will move on to item number six, mayor's report to the board. Mayor Dyer did in fact send me an email wanting to mention and thank Dottie, our recreation director. The mayor said he had an opportunity to speak with members of the Jasperan family who reside on Jasperan Lane, the road adjacent to the recreation complex. And they mentioned that they had not seen the complex in such full use as it was on September 7th and 8th. There was a youth baseball or softball tournament that week, there was, I guess, was there soccer that week also?
Yes, sir.
And they certainly weren't complaining. They thought that it was wonderful to see that many kids in the community and from outside the community getting use out of, out of our facility that we have invested in. He also had the opportunity to chat with the manager of Dairy Queen, who advised him that softball tournaments and these ball tournaments that have been, how many did we have this week, or this year, Dottie?
Um, four.
Four tournaments, hopefully more next year, that have brought in considerable revenue and new customers to her restaurant. I also had an opportunity to speak with the general manager of the Warranton Applebee's, who echoed that, that sentiment, that when we have these tournaments at the fields, which are virtually no cost to the city, we rent the fields out for tournaments to be ran out there, brings in an enormous amount of business to them. They upsize their staffing on those weeks. So it's nice to hear when, when the city's efforts are also good for the local residents and the local businesses.
Yeah, the other thing, John, I noticed that if you look at the financial report, the revenues from the tax, the tourist tax were a lot higher this month.
Right.
Which probably is coming from hotel rentals, hotel rentals, so I thought that was also a good sign.
I was in a tourism meeting, and the general manager of Holiday and Express had mentioned that between the ball tournaments, between the Mobest biker rally, that hotel rentals haven't been an issue. So the mayor wanted me to pass that information on, and also a word of thanks to you, Dottie Phillips, for helping to get that pushed through and organized. Now move on to item number seven, the amended Warren County Disaster Debris Management Plan, Mike Daniels.
Thank you, acting mayor. Couple months ago, I started looking at our county overall emergency response plans for the cities and the county. And then I realized after like the tornadoes that hit Moore, Oklahoma, Joplin, that our city and counties, our city and counties are really not prepared for a major event, especially a tornado, where you're going to get a lot of debris. So then I started working with the permission of the commissioners to put together a debris plan. And the commissioner's instruction was to put it together and then set it, send it out to the cities and the villages for approval. As of this date, this plan has been approved by the city of Martha'sville. Village of Enzbrook approved it last week. It's on the agenda tonight for, obviously, the city of Warranton, and the city of Tru- uh, Truesdale's got it on their agenda for their next board meeting. Once this is approved by those entities, then the county commissioners will adopt the plan. When I originally put this together, I looked at the athletic complex that was north on 47 as an ideal location for debris, because it's flat. And then, then working with Chief Powder Shell and the board here that came back, that that was probably not an ideal location. So the location has been changed to the sewage facility plant on Willa Lo- on Willa Road. That has been changed in the document that was changed this afternoon.
And I guess my question, this is for the, the contingency would be to stockpile this material in the sludge field?
Right.
Correct.
And what's that? That's not a long-range issue?
No, I, I think that's just a temporary...
Maybe a temporary.
...for holding. I mean, you're talking about an incredible amount of material in that circumstance. It would be a temporary holding facility until, you know, the main crux of the disaster is over, then it would be moved off of there.
And what, and once, between hauling it in and then later shipping it out, what kind of damage to the, the existing, is it, is it going to leave us in a worse condition where we're going to have to take on additional work and expense to bring that area?
I think that's why the, the sludge field became a lot more attractive than the athletic complex. You know, bringing the trucks into the sludge field is, you know, maybe there'd be some writing issues or whatnot. I'm sure there would have to be some gravel laid down anyway to get those trucks in and out of there. But long-term, it's a sludge field. So I think, you know, the damage that's done can be reversed fairly easily. I don't really see too much of an issue with that.
Props to you, chief, for using sludge field and attractive in the same sentence.
Very good.
I mean, what typically happens, if we, if you would get a presidential declaration for the debris, that you're not allowed to go onto private property and remove the debris. The homeowner's going to have to remove the debris to the curb, and then that city or county then would be responsible to hire a contractor to pick it up. So we've tried to identify sites within the cities and the county that could be utilized for storage of this debris till it could be disposed of, because the economic recovery of the city is dependent upon getting rid of this debris in a timely manner.
Alderman Cornell, I was involved in St. Louis County when they had that. We're three or four years out, and we're still dealing with SEMA and FEMA on it. And really, the concept is, is you want to have a plan, because St. Louis County got into a bit of a bind with the local municipalities doing this type of agreement. I think the agreement's a great idea, because it was not really a disaster management agreement for debris removal. The idea being, you want to have a coordinated plan for where you're going to take stuff, because ultimately, your goal, if there's a presidential declaration, is to get FEMA and SEMA reimbursement for the money. So for example, if you alter your sludge field, you're going to apply for SEMA reimbursement. But if you don't have that initial plan down, and where St. Louis County got into trouble with the municipalities is, they were not concentrating on the monitors, checking, documenting the amount, because you have to have, you know, the volume of debris that is hauled off, the volume of debris that is ground, tub ground, the volume of debris that's then taken off and everything like that. So I think, and I don't mean to step on your toes here, Mike, but the idea is to have the plan into effect where everybody's going to bring things, so that you have the monitors in place to really be preparing for that reimbursement for SEMA or FEMA if it's declared a disaster.
How typically long does it take before the disaster occurs and FEMA? I mean, it's great to have the plan in place, but for FEMA to go ahead and allow removal to a spot and to set up reimbursement?
Well, they won't come in, Gary, and this is my experience, because I'm still dealing with this with the village of River View in North County, with the North County. You do it, and you are having contact with SEMA, which is a state agency, but you submit all your documentation for reimbursement. Where St. Louis County got burned, and St. Louis County actually ended up paying for all the municipal removal, because they didn't have the monitors at the site keeping track of the volume of debris removed. And for example, we're on our second appeal with one of them that just got denied, and we have a third appeal that we're going to go through. And I, like I said, I think that was three or four years ago that that occurred. Typically, the reimbursement is pretty quick. Typically, you initially, as long as you have everything there. But they, they really don't, because when it happens, the debris is so much, your focus and your city staff focus is just getting it removed and getting it on site so you can get it grounded and get it removed from there. So they, you have some initial communication, but really, the communication is after, and you're submitting your documentation for reimbursement.
And that is all spelled out. There's documents in here where FEMA's been doing this for years and years, and that's, some of the figures that I've used in this documentation are from previous disasters, where they know, if you take a 1,200 or 1,500 square foot house, they know exactly how many cubic yards of debris that house would end up if it was totally destroyed, how much vegetation, based on the average number of trees on a parcel of property.
But you can't always just use the averages. That's why St. Louis County, you actually have to have monitors.
Correct. And that's spelled out here, that you've got, when the trucks come onsite, you've got to have monitors there, logging them in, looking at their load to make sure they're not trying to sharp change, and have a half-truck load and charge for a full load.
So I mean, that, part of the problem with, with the tornadoes that occurred in North St. Louis County was, there was not a local place to take it off designated, so we're scrambling to get all that set up, and then not focusing on the monitors and whatnot, so.
Okay. If it debrays there for a long time, is that going to affect our sewer plant, with nowhere to go with our sludge? Or do we have someplace to go with it?
It'll have to be dealt with. We can go, we can go to...
If I know the government, it doesn't move as fast.
We can go to another field.
Well, the way it worked in St. Louis County was, you bring these contractors in, and I mean, most of the initial debris removal was gone within two weeks, because you're just saturating, and that's the only focus. You, literally, they had trucks just circling the block, picking stuff up, loading it up, taking it off, getting it tub ground and, you know, and then taking care of, so.
So to answer my question, yes, it would be a problem? No, it won't be?
Not within two weeks, no.
Two weeks?
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
And I think another key issue...
Even month or two months, it wouldn't be an issue. We could work off another field.
Okay.
I think another key issue here, though, is we're looking at 124 acres of sludge field, and I don't think by any stretch of the imagination, we're going to cover 124 acres with debris from even the worst-case scenario.
Right.
So, you know, we're going to use a fraction of that sludge field, which will leave a good portion of it usable. And I think there's other fields outside of that that we use as well, aren't there, Gary?
That's correct for hauling sludge. The only issue that I see, that might be an issue, there'd be crossing a bridge going into the wastewater plant. We might have to come in off Jasperan Lane and come down the gravel that way, and just go in and open that up. There's other ways, there's two ways to get in. But if we have a lot of trucks going across that low-water bridge, that might create an issue, so we need to really look at that.
You have a lot of trucks going down Hickory Lake Road, that can be a problem, too, unless we have it rebuilt by then.
I mean, just for your information, the city of Wright City is also using their sewage facility site.
Yep.
And what happened, like after the Joplin tornado, there was a presidential declaration, and once the declaration was issued by President Obama, the Army Corps of Engineers came in, they've got contracts across the country with debris management companies, they came in and did the debris removal for the city of Joplin.
Well, I guess it's nice to see that we're a little ahead of the game with FEMA. The agency I work for, we're the FEMA provider for case management services across the state. We handle Joplin, we handle tornadoes in North San Luis, all the flooding over the last three years. It took FEMA so long to get up to speed so they could issue contracts for reimbursed service agencies, so we're doing the case services for people. So we get the debris handled, that's a start, and we get a little farther along with the contract for the case management for people that are here.
And the other point, when I was meeting the other day with our State Emergency Management Agency Coordinator for the Regency, which is 13 counties, I asked him how many other counties in the, out of that 13 or cities have a debris plan? And he said St. Louis County and Warren County. So it's nice to know that we're kind of ahead of the curve.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
There's no more comments that I believe is on for ordinance at the end of the meeting?
And do you need me to stay for that, or?
You can stay or go as you please.
Thank you.
I'm guessing we're going to see you at the end of the meeting.
Well, I think the public should be aware, this is an exhaustive document that took a lot of effort and time on, on the part of you and your crew.
And it is a living document.
Yes.
Like you said, it's going to change over time as the city grows and other properties open up that you might, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to item eight, approval to close portions of Boschel, Cool, Pinney, and Warrior Avenue from noon to 2:00 p.m. for the Homecoming Parade on September 20th. And I think I saw athletic director Bobby Spoonster in the house.
First off, we want to apologize we weren't here at the last meeting. We had some mixed-ups in communication. So we're here tonight, and we're just asking if you guys could possibly close those roads down for us Friday afternoon. We're hoping to get in an hour and 45-minute window and get everybody in and out. We made the switch because we felt that we were doing the most best for our students of our school district, because a lot of kids don't get the opportunity to come back to a parade on a, on a Thursday evening. But we know what we are doing in the middle of the afternoon on Friday, every student in our school will get the opportunity to see that, and we felt that that was really important. So we're just asking if you guys could go ahead and pass that.
If I could address one...
Sure.
...issue. I had a conversation with Kevin Throng about changing this slightly, and I think that you're in agreement as well.
Yeah.
That we're not going to go onto Warrior. I had some safety concerns with basically having the high school shut down on both ends and not being, you know, no ingress egress for safety purposes. and not being, you know, no ingress egress for safety purposes. He agreed with that, and I believe you agreed with that as well, and I think the only other person was Bobby Russell that needed to weigh in, and she was okay with it as well, right?
Yeah, but we discussed it, we got the eight buses, bus the kids over to the high school, we're gonna take them up the high school lane there on both sides, and stop it at the end of the high school, and then we'll look back around, and then we have the buses waiting there, and then we can get the kids back to wherever.
So, the last, in fact, if you drew up that map, that is really very good. That's the best, the best map of a parade route we've ever had, but the map that I saw for the parade route does not include going out to Warrior Avenue, so if we could just...
Eliminate the closure of Warrior Avenue?
Yes, please.
Okay. Make a motion that we agree to close portions of Voschel, Cool, and Pinney Street from 12 to noon on Friday, September the 20th, for the homecoming parade.
12 to noon?
I'm sorry, 12 to 2.
Okay.
I'm just checking if you're a word down there.
Can we pull somewhere in?
Second?
Who's that second? Motion made by Alderman Casserly, second by Alderman Clark, to close portions of Voschel, Cool, and Pinney Street between noon and 2:00 p.m. for the homecoming parade on September 20th. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Hope it goes over well.
Moving on, item number nine, special permission for excessive noise for the Warren County Fair Board on October 5th for a mud bog and October 26th for a demo derby until 12:00 midnight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is, that's pretty well says what we need at this time, that time period.
Can you state your name for those who don't know you? Jim Gop?
Jim Gop. Now, John don't be that way.
Everybody knows Jim Gop.
And this is just, you got a band and normal stuff, right?
They have a DJ.
DJ.
Yeah, DJ. In the, yes, in Bear Garden, that's it.
Any comments?
I don't have any questions. I'll make the motion that we give special permission for the excess noise at the Warren County Fair, for the Warren County Fair Board on October 5th for a mud bog and October 26th for a demo derby until 12:00 a.m.
Second. Motion by Alderman Casserly, second by Alderman Ock, to grant permission for excessive noise on October 5th and October 26th until 12:00 midnight. Roll call vote?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing.
But now you have to stay the rest of the night.
I do. Well, you're my own.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Moving on, nothing on the amended agenda items. Item number 11, Gabrielle Curry, finance manager.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Only item I have is the financial statement for July, so, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Yeah, on the investment listing, could you kind of just give me up to speed? You got a listing here, CD investment listing, and there's 1.4 million invested, and I notice stuff is coming due. Is this all invested at the same bank? What's the policy in terms of renewing? So, in other words, if you've got something that expired in August or expired in September, do you go out for a rebid occasionally, or do you simply go to the current lender and get the best rate? And what are you, are you renewing for a year? Are you renewing for, what are you doing? Could you kind of give me up to speed on that?
Okay. The reserve amounts for General and the Water Sewer Fund, those we typically invest for nine months. The other ones, we're trying to have money come in every quarter of the fiscal year, and they are spread amongst several banks in order to be below the FDIC requirement, so that we don't have to get irrevocable letters of credit from each bank. So, these are not sitting in one specific bank, there are several of them at...
What is the level before you have to get the letter of credit?
250,000. So, most of these are sitting at 248,000 in entity. But, yes, what we do is, whenever these come due, then we send out a request for proposals to the approved list of investors, and then whenever they come back with their rates, we just choose the best rates, and that's who we're going with.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or discussions for Ms. Curry?
I think for General, the general population that watches this after the meeting, I don't think they have access to this information. I think it's important that they know that the funds are actually looking very well, that the revenue is exceeding our expenses, so year-to-date, revenues exceeded the expenses, 26,398, so that's a positive, because I don't think the general population sees what our financial statements look like on a regular basis, even though they get posted.
Yeah, and there are surpluses both in the general fund of the city and in the enterprise fund, which basically is the water and sewer departments. So, both of them are showing surpluses year-to-date, so I think that's the point of. During nothing further, we'll move on to item number 12, Dottie Phillips, recreation director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The first item that I have is a request for approval to proceed with the master plan project, which was actually budgeted for $50,000 in this year's budget. With your approval, we'd like to go ahead and get started on sending out requests for proposals. I think this is a really important project for the future of our Parks and Recreation Department, and how we will proceed with what we need to do in this department, how we need to proceed to meet the community's needs.
How will you assess the bids as they come in?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
How will you assess the bids as they come in? Because currently, it's not just the lowest dollar, there's gotta be other criteria that you're gonna have to assess who you're gonna work with.
Actually, we...
Well, if we, we've never done a recreation master plan before, but if we do it like we would do other types of proposals or qualifications that come in, we create a master spreadsheet, and would list things like the number of years that they've been in business, proximity to our current location, we would look for similar projects for similar-sized cities, those types of things. So, I don't know exactly what would be included on that list, but we would create that criteria, and then each submission would be evaluated based upon those criteria. And then scored, whoever the highest score is in those areas, and generally, the top two, we would then sit down with and, you know, talk about the cost of the project and any additional information that they could provide.
Make a motion that we authorize the city to go out for bids for a master plan for recreation. Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Clark, for approval of bids for the Parks Recreation Master Plan. Roll call vote?
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six to nothing.
Item B is the youth baseball end-of-season evaluation. Included, you have basically a parent survey, just sort of a synopsis of what that looked like, then you have the end-of-season evaluation that has observations from the season, and then goals for 2014, and you also have the financial report for the entire program.
I think you did an excellent job of how you laid out the observations with the goals and thought through that. It's really interesting, a person wanted to sit and read through that. I thought your responses to the survey or questions was quite high for a survey, because sometimes you don't get those kind of percentages you were getting, so I think, however you've got people to fill it out, that was a great, great way to do it. So, I think it's a great report.
Thank you. I think, you know, overall, we were, we were pleased with the season, we still have a lot of things that we can do to continue to make it better, and we have every intention of doing so, so we're pleased with our first season and hope to make it better for next year.
Dottie, one thing that I will second Alderman Ock on, the format of your report and the content of your report are very pleasing. A little bit concerned about the number of, yeah, the number of feedback on the survey that you got, which was only 41 out of 351. I know that one of the ways that, that was sent out was via email. I'm a little bit concerned, because I didn't get that email. I went back through my, to make sure, and apparently, it got past mine. But, again, for the first time that we've, we've done that survey, I think last year after the soccer season, we may have handed out some paper forms at the field and didn't get much of a response that way, so at least we're taking some progressive steps to get some, some feedback, and I appreciate that, so.
Well, and we, we actually were disappointed also in the number of responses that we did receive, so we are, you know, looking at ways that we can try to, to actually increase, increase those numbers for both, you know, for us at soccer this year, we want to make sure we get more, so.
And see, I thought it was just the opposite. From a marketing standpoint, I thought if you get 10% back, you know, that's a, that's a pretty good turnout, so I guess it depends on what you're used to seeing, but to me, if you got more than 10% response back on a survey...
We survey all our clients where I work, and if you get anything over 10% response, you know, they should always strive to get more and more and more, and that's the challenge, but from my, I agree with you, Alderman Casserly, that response I thought was, was better than I would've thought, especially when your people aren't required or don't have the incentive to fill out.
And plus, the season's over and they're done, they're moved on to the next one, so...
And I understand the difficulty of getting people to participate. It's just concerning when we are, we're doing what we can. Hopefully, we can reach more people and get more participation, but we're trying to make our decisions on how we move forward with the program based upon...
What you might want to consider doing is doing the survey mid-season and postseason, because people are still engaged mid-season, so, you know, you could actually do, how are we doing, and final, what do you think at the end?
Definitely take those...
But I like the report as well.
...and try to see what we can do.
And, you know what, it's encouraging that our, to see our soccer numbers were up this year, that's, that's good news, so maybe people are having a little bit more faith in our recreation. Next.
Item C that I have is approval to hire a practicum student. Excuse me. We were actually kind of disappointed that we only had one application, but I think that the time of the year may have, you know, we were a little bit late in getting that out to the students, and plus then the location of where we are in comparison to the schools that are offering the program. So, we were disappointed that we didn't have more, but I have to tell you, we were very impressed with this particular applicant. I think that she'll be an asset to us. So, I am requesting approval to hire Emily Case at $9.00 an hour as a practicum student.
And what is her hours per week?
She will actually work a total of 150 hours for the semester, so she will have to have that 150 hours completed by the end of her semester. Her hours per week will vary depending on what we have going on, but I would say, you know, she's probably looking at 20 hours per week.
So, you're gonna be her direct supervisor?
Average. Actually, Jared and I share those responsibilities very closely, because she will be doing a lot of work with the soccer program, and Jared is kind of the person who's, you know, got the day-to-day contact with those people, so he will be working with her as well, we both will be.
Make a motion that we approve the hiring of Emily Case at $9.00 an hour to be a practicum student in the Recreation Department. Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dryer, to approve the hiring of Emily Case at a rate of $9.00 an hour as a practicum student in the Recreation Department. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carries six to, six to nothing. Anything else from you tonight, Dottie?
I'm just have kind of two announcements. The Auto Fest, we had 73 cars and about, well, no, 73 cars and 12 in the rod run, so we were, great weather, very pleased, and we'll have a full report ready for my next monthly report. And then the last thing is October 14th at 4:30 and 7:30, the Kelly Mueller Circus will be in town at the Athletic Complex, and tickets went on sale today.
Thank you very much. Item 13, Terry Thorne, Director of Operations, Finance Officer.
My first item for you this evening is actually a request from Mayor Dyer to see if you all are interested in scheduling a work session. He felt like there were some topics that warranted some longer discussion, and was curious if you desired to schedule a work session to discuss some of those topics.
As somebody who is not a big fan of work sessions and would prefer to do them just in open session, what are, what are some of these, these topics?
There are four things that he proposed for that agenda. Discussion of the local preference policy for vendors.
Okay.
The pay rate for the mayor and the Board of Aldermen, use of social media, media, and the mowing of the right-of-ways by city staff.
Are any of those...
Would you not object to a work session if they were telecast? Is that your issue, John?
Um, that's part of my issue, but I, I would, it's my preference, certainly, to have them addressed during the normal course of, of a, of an Alderman meeting. People are used to and expect us to have a meeting on the first and third, and I just think that unless it is a terribly cumbersome conversation, I don't see any one of those being that long of a discussion. I just, my preference is for a Board of Aldermen meeting, but that's just me.
Yeah, I don't see the purpose of doing it separately. I think it's something we could discuss here like we do any topic, so, I mean, I'd be perfectly fine putting that on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can talk about all four of those items.
I think my only concern with, I mean, if you look at tonight's agenda, it's quite lengthy, and I know that there seems to be a sense of sometimes wanting to get out at a reasonable time while our brains are still fresh, if they ever are, and so I think that's where I would see, I mean, if we tried to squeeze something on this agenda, it might be pushing it, but now, the first, first meeting of the month, if the agenda's not so heavy, then I think maybe something can be worked out, maybe not to cover all of them, but try to pick off one or two at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, my, my thought process to the work session is something that, you know, if it's a certain topic that really takes a huge planning discussion for, then that's different, but the way our schedules work, when we have these separate individual meetings, somebody on the board is typically missing or traveling, and we all know that these are the dates that we're supposed to be here for these specific type of meetings, so I personally prefer just to keep it on the regular scheduled meeting, and if we know we have some longer topics, then we prepare ourselves when we come in and stay alert.
Alderman Clark? I go either way on it. If the mayor wants to have it on a work session, I'm for it, whatever, whatever he prefers, I don't, I don't have a preference. Alderman, please?
I can go either way on it, doesn't make me any difference, we'll see what he says when he's there.
Alderman Dryer?
Right now, I can go either way, too. I'm not working, so I'm free all the time.
I would say, then, if he's going to go the way of having it as a work session, I prefer we do it on the weekend.
Oh, no.
Well, that's my point. My point is, a lot of us have, have those schedules where we have booked our meetings around these nights, where the public knows we meet on these days.
I would, I would prefer to have a discussion, if he wants to talk about our pay and the mayor's pay, I think that's something we should do. mayor's pay, I think that's something we should do in a regular meeting.
Yeah, I was just about to say that. That's a good point.
At all.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think for transparency, the more we can do in an open, regularly scheduled meeting, the better. And I don't, and, and some of these issues, I don't know that they can't be split like Alderman Ock. So what, what do we think about a, an idea of moving forward, seeing what the next agenda comes together like, and see what kind of spaces allowing on the next regular board meeting agenda?
Sure.
And some of these also, if, if you get enough information ahead of time so you can think about it, you can process it, so you can come prepared, it's easier than walking into these items cold. Because you read for them, I have no idea what direction we're going, but if, if there's enough preparation ahead, you can get into the regular agenda, and hopefully we can have that conversation and be more succinct than what we're saying, more to the point. I know that's not my issue, but I try to.
I feel you're working on that.
I'll work on that.
Sure. I mean, that, we can certainly do that. As far as the local preference policy, we've done some surveying of other cities, and we'll bring back to you the results of those surveys, just so you have something to compare to. And that information's already put together. So I don't see any reason why for that. Mowing of the right-of-ways, I think we can put together cost information and time information. As far as pay rates for the mayor and board, I think we did a survey a few months ago, but I don't know what his plan is to talk about that. And I don't know what the social media topic is, so I don't know what we would put together for that. But we can certainly attempt to put something in the packet so that you have time to review it ahead of time.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Thorne?
Um, no. You have your project scheduling report in your item thirteen B. We've not proceeded a lot with the scheduled projects that we had, but we've had a lot of unscheduled projects pop up that have had to be taken care of. So we'll be moving forward with some of the scheduled projects in the near future.
Do I have any further questions or discussion for Ms. Thorne? I'll move on to item fourteen, Chief Greg Hattishell.
Good evening, all. I do have, the only agenda item I have this evening is the monthly report. Not a whole lot remarkable there. One ride-along participant.
Is it the same one every month?
Yeah, I think so, maybe.
I was gonna ask if it was Alderman Kesslerly.
I'll have to do it again.
She's been out of town, though.
Oh, that's true.
She did all that, that New York thing. But one question that did come up recently was, somebody called and asked if they had to be a city resident to ride, and the answer to that is no. We encourage everybody to come and see what we're doing, and, you know, hopefully we'll see some more folks come on and ride. And another challenge to Chris, you need to come on and ride. The other thing I wanted to comment on is the East Central Drug Task Force has been busy in town. There has not been a week go by since our relationship established with them that I haven't heard something from the coordinator. I think they've done a couple of search warrants in town thus far and have been successful in those. They're still trying to get the MOU to us. Apparently, it sits on the Colonel's desk in Jefferson City for an extended period of time before he signs it, so.
What is that?
The memorandum of understanding. We haven't paid them anything yet. So, you know, until we get that and we make sure that we're all clear on that, I don't think it's appropriate to do so. However, they are here working, so.
Think the community's getting the message?
I, I don't think they're getting it yet, but I think the more work that they do here and the more we talk about it in this form, the more the community is going to go, okay, they're really serious about this. So.
Good.
Questions about the monthly report?
I, I made a phone call to see, to have an officer come over to see about getting graffiti off the walk bridge, and I don't know if I should follow up with you or follow up with maintenance. We have, we have current walk graffiti that's inappropriate on the bridge.
Oh, okay. I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you.
I wanted to make an observation, which I know we've talked about the Neighborhood Watch program and how I really want that to get more actively rolling in our communities, other than just having the signs in our neighborhood. But I did want to bring to attention to the board and then whoever's watching, and hopefully whoever this good citizen was, on Third Street, on a mailbox, they distributed some signs saying, dear neighbors, recently our neighborhood has been trespassed upon and items stolen. Our community needs to be aware of this. In any way, it goes through to how to have a safer community, the non-emergency number to call. So I was very excited that this happened. I thought the community's involved, and this is really what we need. So whoever in the community, if you're listening, thank you, but the more we can do of this, the better.
And on that topic, I have assigned an officer to do some baseline research on Neighborhood Watch and have also challenged him to identify citizens and neighborhoods who would be potentially good block captains.
Great.
To sort of take that Neighborhood Watch program and run with it. So he's working on that. Now that we're going into the winter, it's going to be a little bit more difficult to identify those people, but, you know, he's working on it pretty hard on his time on duty.
Great, super.
Any other questions for the chief? Item fifteen, Jack Hampf, zoning officer slash building.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First thing I have is the monthly report of the building department, including the code enforcement officers.
Fewer fireworks this month.
Second item I have is a proposal for a site plan approval on July fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen. A request was filed for a site plan approval for a construction shop residential apartment in the existing adjoining buildings located at one oh three through one oh five Northeast Street. This property is owned C two, general commercial. Currently, the use of one oh three Northeast Street is a commercial space on the first floor and the existing apartment on the second floor. The applicant requests change of use approval to expand the existing apartment area to include the entire first floor. Currently, the use of one oh five Northeast Street is a commercial space. The applicant requests approval for a construction shop office in this building. Your packet has pictures of the plans, drawings, and a letter of intent. Public Works Director has reviewed and approved this site plan. Your packet includes the public hearing notices and the perpendicular contractor and trade shops off-site operation and storage is permitted within this, within the C two zoning district. And this motion was approved, motion for approval passed nine to zero with one absent at the August first, two thousand and thirteen, planning the zoning commission meeting. And the applicant and Mr. Costa are both here this evening. If you have any specific questions for them?
I would have a, a brief comment. I, I recall, Bruce, didn't you inhabit that structure once before?
I was in there, I was in one oh five for eighteen years when Darrell, Darrell Hicks owned that property. I leased it from him. Basically requested him to go back and use it for the same purpose that I did before.
But you would also reside there, correct?
No, I was not in the, the, the main crux of this proposition was the vacant building, which is known as one oh three Northeast Street, is a little two-story building.
Hey, John.
Excuse me, could you come to the podium? They can't, they can't pick you up on the right.
Yeah. The, the little building that is known as one oh three Northeast Street is a two-story building adjacent to where I had inhabited for my period of time. That, that structure was vacant for the whole time I was, I was there, with the exception of maybe a few months when the tattoo parlor was in there for a brief period of time. It's my understanding at one time that was either a barber shop and/or maybe a dentist office at one time.
Was it dentist office?
And it was Gary Bennett's barber shop.
But, but in the eighteen years that I was there and the, and since nineteen eighty-nine that I was in Warrenton, that has been vacant all but for a few months. My hope, and as I expressed my letter of intent, would be to convert that, both levels of that building into a residential area, as it's so small that just one level really is, is fairly prohibitive for a, for a livable structure. And it would serve me well to have it right next door to, to where I propose to put my business back into.
You'll make it look better?
I would certainly make it look better.
I will vouch that what Mr. Kester, what I have seen him put his hands on, always turns out looking better, whether it's rental properties that he's had, whether it's the house on Dogburn that you lifted up and put the new foundation under.
I built the mayor's house.
I, we won't hold that against you.
I, I, I did the rehab on H and H Guns. I owned that building for a number of years there and did the, did the facelift on it. And so I've proven what I can do here with, with my skills. And so these buildings are in a state of decline.
Yes, sir.
And my hope is to be able to enter into contract to purchase the buildings if, if I'm able to do with them what, what I'd like to do. And certainly, somebody needs to show an interest in them or they're gonna, they're gonna continue to decline.
Decay and fall down.
That's right.
We got, and we've got this on for an ordinance at the end of the meeting.
And so parking, basically, you're, you're, are you gonna do parking behind, or is it just street parking for what would live?
No, there is green space behind that I had hoped to be able to use for some parking area. And that, between that building and, and what is the old Longman Building, which is now H and H Guns and the little, what was the little bakery there at one time, there's a pretty good-sized green, uh, green space behind there that it really needs to be maintained on a regular basis also. My hope would be maybe to be able to park a truck, construction trailer back in that area and take advantage of that space for off-street parking. Although I would require the necessity of on-street parking there occasionally on Northeast Street in front of the building also. That was never a problem in the past when I was there, even when yesterday's was busy and, and everything was going on. Sometimes there was a little bit of a shovel for everybody, but that demand has declined unfortunately in that area.
Unfortunately. Yeah, it's a interesting building with a whole, old history in Warrenton. When you think about it, it used to be a, I guess, hotel at one time, and I worked in there for five years and the CPA was in there.
I see.
And it was interesting, always to roam through. The lower level, you could see places where it looked like people, people could have been shamed in the lower level, maybe slaves at that time. It really goes back.
It's right.
Really fascinating.
Now, now, my proposal does not include.
No, I would say, no.
Or, or shaming anybody.
No, I would say, no. But, but.
But then again, if somebody has to pay a bill.
But, um, in my opinion, it's a shame the old hotel was not restored. It could have been a real calling card for downtown Warrenton.
It's got great historical.
The old Dutch hotel in downtown Washington, look what that's turned into.
Exactly right.
Well, good luck with that project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
One question for you. I, I spoke briefly with, with Ms. Thorne about this. I have gotten probably a half dozen, maybe a little bit more complaints about the state, the conditions of paddock fields. And more than half of those concerns have come from residents of paddock fields. And curious to know where we're getting it on a property maintenance, both the property and the mobile homes that are being brought into that. The concern is from the, the residents that live within there. The concerns expressed to me are the conditions of these mobile homes being brought in are, at least in their opinion, are their observations not livable, but they are being used as rentals.
On the property maintenance aspect, Paddock Fields hired a new property maintenance company that started Tuesday after the holiday. I went out and met them in the field. The following Wednesday, I took out Guy and one of his men, Rusty, and then the code enforcement officer and, and the building inspector, we all met with them, discussed our main items of concern, we did a writeabout, and in the past two weeks, they've appeared to make a lot of progress on the punch list we gave them during our writeabout. Their goal, from the way they expressed it to me, is to make major improvements. It's in a state right now where, where everything cannot be fixed in, in two weeks or a month, but I, I do feel from my initial meeting with them that they are honestly trying to make improvements and move forward. And we, we are definitely keeping up to date on, on issues out there.
How does that work when a person brings a mobile home? And I assume most of these mobile homes are owner's mobile home, not paddock renting them. So when somebody brings a mobile home in the community, how is there an approval process? Do you go out and inspect to make sure that some of these concerns are addressed up front? Or are these issues of deterioration?
The, the mobile homes, there's not currently, we would inspect for when they hook up the electric.
Right.
And then Guy, men inspect for hooking up the water in the sewer. The actual structures, we would, we would see and inspect either the building inspector or the code enforcement. Would see if there's issues with that.
Do you think it's a case where the standards are not, in the code, are not high enough or strict enough, or it's just a case of maintaining and the normal thing that goes on in, in any area of town?
I would think it's probably a case of normal maintenance like you have throughout town. In one person's eyes, this may be the best home they've ever had, and then to another person, they might think they would never live there.
Right.
But if it's safe and it meets code, we really have to approach it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Item sixteen, Brad Boosker, Maintenance and Grounds.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I have my monthly report. Not much, still cutting a lot of grass, doing a lot of trimming, a lot of maintenance.
Any feedback on the cemetery policy? Any feedback on the cemetery?
Not, not at this time, no.
Okay.
No questions there. The next I have is the bid for the two thousand and fourteen Chevy thirty-five hundred four-wheel drive truck with dump bed and snowplow.
And I will, having had an opportunity to review this, as all the board has, and I believe the mayor has expressed some concerns on this also, the, the bids, it looks like the low bid was forty-one thousand dollars and eighty-one cents from Pope Chevrolet, but Gastor Chevrolet was, what, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents higher? And there was, there was one in between there also.
Right.
Out of Washington.
Out of Washington.
Yeah, modern auto, out of Washington.
Well, the mayor expressed, and I would, I would agree that one hundred and ninety-nine dollars is, at least in my opinion, worthy of, of supporting a local business.
I, I would concur on that.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of a two thousand and fourteen Chevy thirty-five hundred four-wheel drive from Gastor Chevrolet in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Not the low bid, but the best bid. Best bid, local vendor.
I would support that. I would second the motion. No discussion. Key counselor, you have an issue?
No, as long as you, according to the auditor, Terry and I talked about this before, as long as you.
as long as you state why you're not accepting the lowest bid. That's the same one.
And I think that's one of the things I wanted to make a comment about. It's not just local here, but for two hundred dollars every time we have to maintain that vehicle or take that vehicle to that facility for maintenance and time, by the time you have the employees traveling.
I don't think that that is... You can buy it, it still service it at Gastor under warranty. As long as it's a Chevy dealer. But again, that aside on this.
Now, Gastor is in Truzeville, just so you're off there.
I understand.
It's not Warrenton. Just wanted to make sure.
Sure, sure. We try not to hold that when a business leaves Warrenton, go to Truzeville. We still part of the...
There's no other conversation. Motion by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Ock, to approve the purchase of a 2014 Chevy 3500 four-wheel-drive in the amount of forty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents from Gastor Chevrolet. Roll call vote.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Is that it for you tonight, Brad?
Oh, I have.
Thank you, Brad.
Wow, that was fast.
That was fast. Item seventeen, Guy Giebers, Works Director. What do you got for us tonight, Guy?
The monthly report. And we got some monthly routine flushing of three thousand, one hundred and fifty feet. And we inspected sewer mains with the camera about one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six feet. And then the other things that was going on. We re-struck the streets of Main Street. Lot of asphalt work.
I'm really glad he fixed the PTO on the honey wagon.
That was a concern of mine, too. So can you give us a brief update as to what's going on in the neighborhood? Where people were several months ago talking about the sewer backup? Could you give us an update on that?
That's where some of the camera work has been done. And we're just looking into the mains and nothing's, nothing obvious yet. We've been popping the manholes and checking, see the status of the manholes and where we're at there. So it's being worked on. And we just... And that's where it says sewer main inspection. That's the camera work with the camera. Any other questions?
I don't believe so.
Next item I have is a SCADA maintenance agreement. That's what we use to control our wells and alarms us if we have issues with wells. This is the same agreement we had last year.
What does SCADA stand for?
Oh, great.
Well, it's great? I didn't know. I didn't know. I was just kind of curious if it was something in the industry or, you know, or that you guys use, you know?
We use it at the wastewater plants on the SCADA system, the well systems is on it. And it's tied in. I have my computer home's tied in on the SCADA, plus with the supervisor, the water and the wastewater have it, so we can monitor it. And I just drew a blank on what SCADA meant, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sure it's not here anywhere.
I was just kind of curious.
Supervisor of Control and Data Acquisition.
Thank you.
I just Googled it. Chris beat me to it.
I won't ask that question.
Well, you can ask it next time, I know it.
Or Alderman Ock, great.
Great, I think great's better.
So I mean, basically, this is a unique item service.
Yes.
So you can get multi-bids on this.
No, and then...
And it's a maintenance agreement, so they already have the equipment, yeah?
That's correct. And that includes the software, and then they come out and check it, make sure it's working properly before we have any issues.
Make a motion to approve the bid for the SCADA maintenance agreement. Five thousand, one hundred dollars.
Second, motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Clark, to approve the SCADA maintenance agreement in the amount of fifty-nine, eight hundred dollars. Roll call vote.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. What's next, Guy?
Next item I have is the purchase of a new dump truck. This will be under state contract. For one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
All right, John. John always says, why can't we buy a used one?
No, I don't.
Oh, you don't? I'm sorry.
Is this the same truck you've been trying to buy for three years now?
This will be the second truck that I bought, trying to buy in the last three years.
Trying to buy?
Well, the two older ones are nineteen-years-old and seventeen-years-old.
Well, the reason I say trying to buy, we've, other issues have come up where we swapped the truck for like a new water pump or something like that.
So that's due state bid.
It seemed to be more important to be able to flush than it was to dump it.
This meeting is going down hell, really.
Could you control this meeting, John?
Well, my only question on this, on Brad's bid on his truck, and I understand it's a one-ton truck, it's not a dump truck. I'm gonna go back briefly to that. Number one, Brad, one of the things we didn't mention when we discussed that, you made a recommendation to accept the low bid, as has always been the practice and the policy of the city. So I want it to be clear that Brad's recommendation was based on what we've historically done, not necessarily his belief on whether or not we should shop local. But in that case, there were three other bidders that beat the state bid on that. Is it possible to contact dealers and put this out to possibly beat this state bid?
The list price for an international, it's a state, with the state bid, is a seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine, two. With a state discount, it brings it to sixty-eight, six, twenty-three. And then the dump truck bid itself is a separate item that they piggyback off of, and that come out to be thirty-two, six, fifty.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying is, and I was shocked to see three other dealerships come in and beat the state bid. I hadn't seen that happen before. I don't know if it's because we normally take state bid and we don't try and get a bid lower. But what was on the state bid on the truck that we are purchasing for grounds of maintenance was beat by three other dealerships. And I'm wondering, can we, could we contact dealerships with our specifications and maybe get a bid that is less expensive than state bid?
The problem with that, his truck, there's not, there's only a few dealers out to handle it. Gastor can't get these. That's where, where mine, the one-ton fell into that thing where, you know, you could get them. And that's some of them. Wes Brother said he couldn't even get one. He was a state bidder for it. He said it'd be February before he'd even get the truck. He doesn't have the allocation where the bigger trucks, there's only certain bigger dealers that, that's all they deal in. And I think that's where his is gonna be. You're not gonna find that, Gastor won't be able to get that truck because it's not in their, in their thing.
Allocation.
Yeah, mine fell in that, right in that line there where they could still get them. And it's, you know, it's a service truck. Now, you go on anything bigger than that, it would probably wouldn't happen like that.
Okay. Hundred and one thousand dollars, boy, that's...
Ain't bad.
Yeah.
Well, you gotta put that over a twenty-year period.
Okay. Over a twenty-year period, that's still...
Is that not what you said to let...
Yeah, we do get, we do get good life out of them. I mean, that's, the one is seventeen-years-old. I mean, we don't tear him up.
That thing ought to have a roof, a kitchen, and three bedrooms in it. Boy, I shout.
That's a lot of money, I know.
I'll make a motion that we approve the bid for a 2014 dump truck from International Truck and Engine Corporation for one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Dryer, to approve the bid for a 2014 dump truck to International Truck and Engine Corporation. Roll call vote, please.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Next item I have is a mini cargo van. And we did check with the local dealer, and the, all they have is a full-size. The only person that really carries a minivan would be the Chrysler, needs to replace the truck that was damaged and wrecked last year.
John, doesn't this go more to your question, John? As to if you put this out on the broader range?
Yes.
Maybe somebody from even St. Louis County?
Right.
Or Wentzville, who would have the same product? I think this is more applicable. Is that...
Yes. Basically, that, I had never had the opportunity or the reason to doubt state bid. I was always under the impression state bid was the holy grail and beat everybody else. But when I see three other dealerships beat state bid, I wonder if it's not of value to contact some other dealers in the area and see if they can't meet this, beat this price.
Did we bid this, or do we simply ask for the state price?
We just go off the state price.
Okay, so this really never was bid?
That's correct.
You know, personally, I'd like to see us bid it, just to see what we get as we...
I can do that.
I know that's throwing you guys for a loop, but that's a change from what we have normally done.
That ain't no big deal.
Thank you, Guy.
I can do that.
And that's not gonna put you in a bind if we push that off and...
No, they could just use my truck.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you use John's car.
Yeah.
You can use my big old conversion van. We'll move on to the next item then, Guy.
The generator maintenance agreement. That was budgeted it.
We're all waiting for it to pop up.
Exactly, it's up.
Okay.
It's here.
I have, I've punched it since we didn't get it yet.
Here it comes.
Global Tech Power?
It must be farther away from the louder or something. On the farthest one away. All right. John's ready.
So you're recommending that we accept the low bid?
Global Tech Power.
Are they the ones that have been doing it?
And he's the one that we, the generator that we just purchased, that's on its way.
We're buying from them.
It's come through them, and he's from Troy. He's closed. If we have issues, that's who I'm gonna call.
Make a motion to accept the bid of eleven hundred dollars by Global Tech Power for the generator maintenance agreement.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, second by Alderman Clark, to accept the bid of Global Tech Power for eleven hundred dollars for generator maintenance. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next.
Next item I got is the chlorine equipment maintenance agreement. That's for the wells. And low bid with Brooks and Associates, and he was the one that did it last year.
Quite a bit cheaper, isn't he?
Well, the other one's guy's got labor and mileage in it. So this guy comes out from Brooks and Associates and charges mileage?
He comes out, he doesn't charge the mileage, however he had it worked in, but I figured it out of it. He did it last year in a day, all the wells. So it come out to be, I figured it at eighty-six, thirty-five an hour is what he's making, so I figured he can come out and, if he did it in eight hours.
Thirty hours, which would be four days, through the same work this guy's doing in one.
In one. And he did it, he did it last year. So I know he can do it in one day.
Make a motion for the approval of the bid from Brooks and Associates for two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents for chlorine equipment maintenance.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dryer, for the bid of Brooks and Associates for chlorine equipment maintenance in agreement. Roll call vote.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Next item?
Booster pump maintenance agreement. Well, seven has two booster pumps, and Warrior Tower has a total of three. And JCI Industries came in at low bid, one thousand, two hundred dollars.
See, normally, when you have these bids that come in below your budget, you say, I wanna move this somewhere else, is that mean you're giving this five hundred dollars back to general revenue?
Oh, he'll come back and spend it, Gary. He'll come back and spend it.
That'll be the next meeting.
Next meeting, huh, all right. Who had it last year, Flynn?
We did not have a booster pump maintenance agreement. We just called what we needed.
I was just curious since...
Flynn, Flynn does most of our well work for pumps, but these pumps push the water and gives it more pressure into the system.
Have they done work on our system?
JCI, no, they have not. But I've worked with JCI before.
And where's JCI at of?
They're in Jeff City. But they're, they go all over.
John, since this is preventative maintenance, it's not really like they're responding to emergencies.
That's correct. They're gonna come out and make sure that our packing's good, the seals are good, the performance of the pumps where it needs to be.
Make a motion that we accept the bid from JCI Industries for twelve hundred dollars for the booster pump maintenance agreement.
Second.
Motion by Aldo Person Casterly, second by Alderman Flake, to accept the bid of JCI Industries in the amount of twelve hundred and fifty dollars for booster pump maintenance agreement. Roll call vote.
It's twelve hundred dollars, isn't it?
Yes, twelve hundred dollars, correct.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
No.
Motion. Boy, I'm having a hard time calling that up, aren't I? Motion carries four to two. Is that all for you tonight, Guy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Nothing else you need us to buy?
I'm sorry.
Nothing else you need us to buy tonight?
Not tonight.
He's on his daily limit. Wait until next meeting.
My goodness.
Hundred thousand.
The most expensive employee there.
All right. Moving on, item number eighteen, bills for ordinance.
Make a motion to reduce the bill number forty-four dash thirteen for first reading.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Dryer, for the first reading of bill number forty-four thirteen. Roll call. Gonna do a roll call on that?
No.
Go ahead.
An ordinance is authorized in the zoning ordinance, section four oh five point three nine oh of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for a construction shop slash residential apartment located at one oh three dash one oh five Northeast Street.
Call for the second final reading and passage of bill number forty-four dash thirteen.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Clark, for second reading.
An ordinance is authorized in the zoning ordinance, section four oh five point three nine oh of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for a construction shop slash residential apartment located at one oh three dash one oh five Northeast Street.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Aldo Person Casterly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Good luck with your project.
Yes. Go make that, please, Bernie.
When you're done with that, we'll give you a couple...
Moving on to 18B, bill number 45-13. Call for the first reading of bill number 45-13. Second. Motion by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman Dryer for the first reading of bill number 45-13.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the disaster debris management plan between Warren County and the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
Call for second and final reading and passage of bill number 45-13.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, second by Alderman Cornell for the second and final reading of bill number 45-13.
An ordinance to authorize the mayor to sign the disaster debris management plan between Warren County and the city of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Person Casserly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Motion for adjournment?
Second. Motion by Alderman Ock, second by Alderman Clark. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, likewise?